Meeting at 6:33 PM. The Montpelier-Roxbury Board of School Directors. Now, all masked. First order of business is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak? I see we have a couple of members. And I will let your slotted for after the consent agenda. And do we have anyone on Zoom?
No.
It looks like no. Okay. We do want to add an executive session to the agenda for the purpose of appointing a new board member. And then we also have a contract issue to discuss. Any other possible agenda items?
On the policy monitoring report, there was a third policy in our board packet, but it's not on the agenda. And it's one of the ones from the last meeting. I believe it's the dissection one.
Yeah. And there was a second from last meeting
that wasn't in our...
That isn't in the packet.
But I think...
So I'm wondering if we should just move to put both policy monitoring reports from last meeting onto tonight's agenda?
But we don't have a report for that other one.
Well, we did from last...
But nobody could open it.
Oh, that's right.
So my suggestion was to add dissection to the policy monitoring report list.
That's the one you were gonna check to see. Had you guys done that as a policy? That's why it wasn't on it.
We discussed it. I don't think we...
We discussed it. Oh, I thought, okay.
No, I think it's fine to move forward with the monitoring report. It's just that we...
Oh, the monitoring report, yeah. We were gonna have it as the...
First reading.
First reading, yeah. That's why I was confused on that.
So add it to the policy monitoring?
List.
List, okay. So we'll have three on that. All right, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
This is Jill. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks. And then, next item, new board applicant. We got one letter of intent from Rhett Williams. And you're very welcome to take a few minutes to speak to your candidacy, answer any questions if you wish. You don't have to, but opportunity...
Well, I...
Not to put you on the spot, Rhett.
Yeah, yeah. And you just referred to your letter, too.
Right. I mean, the letter kind of says, if anyone didn't read the letter, you know, "I was a teacher for four years in Queens. Learned a lot. Had some struggles. We can talk about another time." But it was part of the Teach for America...
Are ya?
Yeah. New York City Teaching Fellow Program.
My husband did the Teaching Fellows.
Yeah. So I was a teaching fellow. And then, you know, family issues moved towards psychiatric care, to mental health care. So that's what the field that I'm in now. And I'm the Director of Education and Training at the psychiatric care hospital next to CPMC. And I've always thought that this was the public service that I would end up in because of my background and because of my interest in the schools and because of my interest in the future of the school system and the vision process. And there's an opening, and there's a need, and there's not a lot of people stepping forward. And the time is now. So, you know, I just want to do the best job I can. I don't have an agenda of any kind. I want to be open to the best ideas and, you know, hear the bad ones and put in what work I can to the best ability that I can and try to help in any way. That's about it.
Excellent, thank you. Really appreciate it. Any questions for Rhett? And you're welcome to stick around. We will formally appoint an executive session. Yeah, I'll come and try not to be a cliffhanger.
I want to thank you for submitting your letter. And I think it's great that you're willing to step up. Thanks.
Yeah, it sounds like we're all very lucky to have your interest.
Absolutely. Great, no, thank you, Rhett. Really appreciate it. So, board discussion, planning for community outreach for the board. I know everyone gave ideas. Amanda very kindly put together kind of a list of assembled ideas. I don't know, Amanda, can I talk about your list a little? Maybe you have Amanda talk about our list and then we can kind of think about an outreach plan, which will probably be various people taking groups on the list and planning to reach out to them and do some listening and come back to the board.
So, yeah, I mean, I send it out around. It's a list, and I compile everybody's ideas. So, kind of set in three components. One was like the in-school outreach to students, to families. Another one is extending that outreach to, in community sessions with the various organizations in both towns and, like, the places that people frequent. The third one is just like tabling at events, you know, community events that happen, places that people congregate, like the farmer's market, art walks, and things of that sort. And the third piece of it, well, four pieces, I guess. Another one is the community organizations, which I already talked about. And then the rest is just marketing flyers using the various outlets, like Front Porch Forum, some of the local newspapers, like Time Argus, and that. So I was hoping that, you know, we can use some of those ideas and then decide, you know, like how we go about. I see as like the next steps just together coming up with some questions that we want to answer so that it's not so open-ended but also not closed. So that we can, when we do analysis and qualitative data, that we have some sort of framework that is not such out there. So that's what I was thinking. I don't know what people think.
Yeah. The other thing I clarified, too, is, and we had, Amanda talked about this, but obviously this is important for the Esser III discussion, but we were thinking of just framing it in terms of budget priorities in general so we can not only use it for the budget, but we also thought it might be less confusing to the public if we were trying to explain various buckets of money rather than just, you know, stating the type of, I think, make clear the type of spending that Esser can be spent on so people are thinking about those priorities, but then also just getting ideas in general so the discussion is not, well, we can't spend on that or maybe we can spend on that.
Exactly.
But just to get the priorities. And then, you know, obviously, if Esser funds aren't appropriate for things that rise to the top, you know, there are other funds that are a budget discussion that we can talk about. Any questions for Amanda or just about the idea process in general? How do people want to go about divvying up groups? You could either take some now and maybe, you know, if we don't get to them all, we can, you know, come back and if we have some later, we can do it by email.
Forgot to mention one thing is that also the idea to have some affinity spaces for different folks, BIPOC folks or families that have kids with IEPs, five O four plans, you know, diversity. And there are some community members that might be interested in helping facilitate those just to give people trust and, you know, a little more opening to kind of share feelings and things. So that could be, and, you know, we could probably ask LGBT folks to also like lead some of those conversations so that it is more of an identity space. That's why it's important to kind of come up with some questions.
So it sounds like we have two things. One, to come up with some common questions. And maybe we can do that again by just emailing them. And then, it might take a little time to set up some of, set up some meetings. So if there are groups or organizations that people kind of know right now they'd love to take, maybe we can claim them. Otherwise, we can, yeah, also just claim them by email.
Yeah. And if there are some that you're missing, you know, we can add them now. You can send them to me. That was not a full list.
I've reached out to the Mean Street Middle School Caregivers Alliance. And so I know I'm going to start going to those meetings and helping. They want more, they want briefings on what's happening at the school board. But, and then I can use that time to also receive feedback.
Yeah, awesome.
So I can do that one.
I would be willing to do the high school. I need to know what the State of the High School Caregivers Alliance is for.
Boosters.
Boosters, yeah.
More athletic.
Still, I know it's kind of evolved over the years.
I'm meeting with Jolanda tomorrow. With like the Pi.
The Pi groups.
President. So I can talk to her about how they can support. And then I'm part of the UES Caregivers Alliance.
I love the idea of having like a regular presence at places like the farmer's market. I think it might be good to have some sort of like signup genius or something going where, you know, we could just rotate through and just have a table there that people could talk. I don't know if that's what we're picturing at the farmer's market or the coffees, you know, that kind of thing. I'm happy to partake, but I'm not gonna do it all myself. We'd probably have to reach out to the organizers of the farmer's market. And I think, you know, we could do it in a more like casual way, but it's gonna be awkward unless we have an official presence.
So here are the tasks. All right then. I can, I can reach out to the farmer's market and figure out the logistics. And then you can set up a genius and people can sign up for a Saturday that they are able to go there and enjoy some coffee.
Yep.
And like just flyer.
Christian, is there a farmer's market that happens weekly or biweekly in Rocksperry?
There's not a farmer's market. Kind of tried to develop like an inventory of like gathering places, you know what I mean? We're, you know, Roxbury is a bit of a different community in terms of what its downtown is, looks like. So, you know, places that get, I guess, like high-traffic places in Roxbury, as much as there would be traffic, you know, like the country store and the town office and, you know, the school certainly. So, the post office, actually. So, you know, something I've just been thinking about, you know, if it's a private, you know, business, obviously, we would need to get permission from the store owner. And then also the post office being a federal building. I don't know what that would look like. So just needing to do some outreach from, you know, the few well-trafficked places that we have here in town to see if we could, you know, set up and do some outreach. So I know that there's also the community center, which would just be a matter of arranging with the town, our town administrator, Tammy, and just getting permission, I think, to just set up there essentially. So, yeah.
Do you want to check that?
What's on?
Do you want to check on that?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. I could reach out to someone on FOMS and see if they want to do like another kind of listening session like we did pre-COVID.
With who?
With the Friends of Montpelier Schools Group.
I'll take the basement teen center. Reach out to somebody there to see how I could, I or a couple of us, or maybe we alternate, like the farmer's market, drop in, like figure out how to engage, ask questions, see if the teens will even talk to us.
Well, it kind of brings up that question of like also potentially having a board member be... We had talked about it in the spring.
Yes.
And then we sort of said, let's table that
and do it in the fall. But maybe, I know there was a lot, you had a lot of ideas about how to potentially or who to reach out to to do that. Maybe we just like accept letters and do the same thing like we are doing with other board seats. We just put a poster up or something and have them send an email out, whoever that would be, the principal, and then just accept letters of interest.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Do you want me to reach out about that?
For student board members, maybe?
Yeah, student board members.
There's not a lot of people knocking on the door to take that on. The person is Matt McLean from our end. This Matt is the Director of Flexible Pathways. And we run that through the Flexible Pathways programming.
So I'll connect with you.
It would be good to recultivate that.
Yeah. Yeah, and it might be nice to not have it be only like a flexible pathway thing, like a...
It's not. Matt just knows that, Matt has closely connected to all the students around what interests are.
Yeah.
And he just knows the student body in that way.
Okay.
So he's just the best person to do it.
Okay.
But it's not technically a flexible pathway.
So I'll reach out to you.
Have we ever considered a middle school student?
We...
We've had the onset committees. They were...
Yeah, we've had them on there.
The facilities, the school building.
I think it becomes the night meetings become more of a challenge when it gets to the middle school level. But it's worth, you know, Mike Barry has any ideas or someone?
I mean, I have a few students that I would love to have, who are brilliant. But, I mean, I think the idea of having letter of intent if people are interested is just like makes it a little more exciting for students to participate that way.
So I'll reach out to Libby and kind of work on it behind the scenes and then come back to the drawing board with you guys at the next meeting.
Is Matt McLean also the one to ask about what, sporting events? If we wanted to put a table there? It'd be Matt Link. Matt Link, thank you.
And will we go through you for that?
Yeah, you just CC me. You need to reach out to me. I can do that one.
Oh, great.
You actually get a lot of parents' party events, so...
I'd be willing to write an op-ed until we run it by everyone before publication, but if that's helpful.
Right.
Christian, does it make sense to do an op-ed now or when you have a budget to say?
Maybe at least the Front Porch Forum for sure to try to drive people to the webpage to submit ideas. And then, yeah, definitely, that makes sense. We have, hoping we're opting.
Or to announce, like, something we're opting against. Find this at the farmer's market this Saturday or something. Could be that, what you use that for.
So maybe with all this, we can like come up with some schedule once we have like the ideas of like, here are the pleaded spaces. Here's how you can take part of these conversations. In Roxbury, boom, boom, boom. In Montpelier, boom, boom, boom. We'll also have a presence these days at this state of events come talk to us.
And do we have to compile this as some sort of a report to meet the requirements? Is that, we just have this...
There's no requirement for it. I'm just looking at the schedule. Like, we, in order to build the budget and take community feedback into consideration, we'd need it, we, me, the administration, would need it by the board meeting of the 20th of October and no later than that. So a quick turnaround. Yeah. October 20th.
I mean, I think it doesn't... This work needs to happen regardless of budget season to know the feedback of the community so we can have some of it and we can have, you know, others afterwards. I don't think we should limit ourselves to like, we have two weeks to do all these things. I think this is a way for us to start really having, becoming really that bridge and that people can see as a, is an open door. So I think that we could do a lot short-term before October 20th, but also we shouldn't limit ourselves. And we should actually plan to do this...
Ongoing.
Ongoing so that we could have that community feedback and build something that is like, that can help with the visioning process when, once that begins, which is a six-month process. And it just becomes a, you know, a platform of data collection from our communities.
Yeah. So the October 20th, you're saying, Libby, is about ideas or input for budget creation?
Right.
There's still time for budget feedback after October 20th.
Yeah, the initial budget presentation to the board by the administration is the first of December.
Okay.
But that takes a while to put together.
Yes.
So if...
And that is not, October 20th is not Esser feedback?
No, no. No, it's budget.
Just budget.
Budget season, yeah.
Yeah. And I totally agree, Amanda, that this should just be part of the board culture of like just creating space for people to talk to us.
But just so you know, the first presentation is the first, and you give feedback on that presentation. And then we take that feedback and we bring back another presentation, which is often similar, but it has your feedback in it and on the 15th of December.
Yeah.
We take more feedback.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, so there's plenty of...
It's ongoing.
Yeah, except if you want. Once we present on the first, like, yes, the budget tweaks and all that kind of stuff, but we're not reinventing that budget going forward.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we've often done a separate, kind of early January, like a special meeting to try to entice the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, where we brought in like pizza and, you know, just take in feedback. And that's, that meeting is more or less like the last opportunity to really change it.
Because it has to get warned and that kind of stuff. Yeah, and that's scheduled for the first of January.
Okay.
I'll be so cold.
Thank you.
The, I'm sorry.
The first meeting, fifth of January.
Yeah, sorry. The first meeting in January.
It's the way we bring everyone in, is to just...
Do what I need to say.
Sorry, Amanda will be in or say that joke.
This holiday.
I'll be wearing my sleeping bag.
One other thought that I have is that even though there are lists of places and gatherings that are in Roxbury, I would, I myself would like to attend some of those. And I would encourage other Montpelier members who live in Montpelier to come to those and also, Kristin, and to come to some of the Montpelier stuff. That we should be doing both. We should be in both places because we represent the whole community.
Correct. So process question around that. So if there's more than two board members present at any sort of meeting, does it need to be warned? Is that...
It needs to be warned if you intend to talk. If you just want to absorb and let someone else lead the event, there are going to be as many board members as possible. But once you start engaging in the discussion, then...
Can you give like an introduction as to what type of feedback we're looking for and then sit back and listen? Or, or is that too much?
No, I think you can do that. You can answer questions.
I think if one person did that and kind of like laid the foundation and said, you know, here's the process, here's what we're looking for, here's input, it would be good. We're here to listen. We can't speak because of the board meeting.
Yeah.
And then you sit back and you listen.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Is it strict listening? Or there's not even a follow-up question? Or would you mean a...
I think if you, if you answer like a basic...
Tell me more about that.
Question, I think, I think, if it's like purely informational, I think once it starts to look like brainstorming, then it becomes problematic.
If you have more than one board member.
If you have...
More than two. More than two board members. I see.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna want to make sure we have a place to compile when we do start creating a schedule. We want to have a place where people can see that so that if you want to attend, then you can. Okay.
So I like making flyers. So I can make a flyer and then we can just change the dates and like the name of the places. I'll just pick a generic. So like if you're gonna do that, you can, you know, farmer's market, and we just change the date.
Great.
Thank you so much for creating this.
Yeah, no, it's fantastic.
Good, good stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, look at some more of these if you want to, you know, start doing outreach. Just send an email so people know so we're not paid an effort. But, you know, obviously, the more groups and people we talk to, the better.
You can also add me to the list for the principal's swoop scoop for more of the outbound engagement. I imagine it's something like, the Caregivers Alliance has announcements in like every other one of the swoop scoops that go out? I think it would be nice if the board did as well.
And Libby, do you know where you stand? Where does the school stand right now? Like, I see one of the things is about open hours at the MHS library. Is, would that have to be outside of school hours?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. But the idea being hope, that we're hopeful to attract students to that is what I'm thinking. So maybe it would be better to just have open hours outside of the high school or something. So maybe it would be better to just have open hours outside of the high school or something. We should talk about what makes sense of how to like create a public presence for students to engage with us.
I think if you were, yeah, we can talk about that and Matt and Renee would probably know better than I do, but I think student schedules are sort of different.
Right.
Um, and so. And we're really trying to limit some things, but if you were to do things out in the courtyard directly after school. You know, it's a nice space, there's lots of seating and. Uh, if it's directly connected to school time, that would probably be better, or you can hang out in the tent during the lunch hours if you wanted to.
Not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Then we don't have time to eat.
Oh, the high schoolers do.
So I will explore that.
Yeah.
With you.
Yeah, Matt and Renee would probably be better in that conversation than I would, but that there's definitely free time for high school students. We would just have to make it known who you were.
Yeah, right.
Kind of good stuff.
Yeah, okay.
Soren, what's your mom doing here?
Exactly. Good, good vantage point to spy.
I know that the UES Caregivers Alliance is firing outside for like their meetings and just like a welcoming thing, so I wonder if that's something you could do too, which is like flyer. I'm a school board member, tell me thing.
Sure.
You mean during drop off and pickup?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I can ask Peter about that when I email about the swoop scoop.
One that had great appeal to me because it just seemed like it would be so much fun is riding the bus with the kids and is that a real offer? I would love to know because Roxbury, you have thirty minutes of the captive audience from here to there. Is that allowable?
Um, I can't see why we couldn't allow that since you're a school board member, not a, just, you know, I.
Sure.
I don't think parents would be happy if other people were riding the bus with their children.
Right. Right.
Um, I will tell you that if you're riding two Montpelier in the morning.
A little sleepy of a crowd.
The students are not exactly exuberant at that time and in the afternoon they may be too exuberant to really talk to you.
Maybe an early release day or it's right at the sweet spot.
So, I mean, if you wanted to, it would be an interesting.
It would be, yeah.
Very informational.
It just looked so fun, felt nostalgic.
Of many levels.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I've been thinking about the Roxbury teen population too because I think initially when I joined, we were, you know, I was asking about the number of Roxbury middle school and high school students and I was kind of a stu- it was like forty-six, which somewhere around.
It's not that high now. Well, yeah, actually, if you're talking about middle school and high school, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, middle school and, yeah, yeah. So, you know, in our community, we don't have as much of it, there's not many places for young folks to be visible, you know, we don't have like a lot of commerce, we don't have a lot of places for them to be, so I'm, I'm very interested in trying to reach out to our Roxbury kids and. Possibly look at the library as being a space to host some sort of, you know, Q and A platform with them because I think their experience is also somewhat unique because they're coming back and forth and. And they're new to the district, so I would love to hear, you know, how their experience is going and what's been happening for them. So I will take that on too, you can add that to my list.
I wonder if you could arrange the bus ride as not just you being on the bus, but you just speaking on the bus and asking for feedback kind of conversation.
Yeah.
I think.
Cause it's probably the best way to get.
The high schoolers from, sorry, sorry.
I noticed.
The, uh, high schoolers from Roxbury get to school early.
Yep.
Um, because they get, because they have, we have to have the middle schoolers there by eight and the high school schedule doesn't start till eight thirty.
Start, yeah.
So that's another.
Yeah.
Please, I think they hang out in the cafeteria from eight to eight thirty.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So it might be another opportunity that might be a little bit more structured than being on the bus.
Right.
Um, and you might have a more willing audience.
Yeah.
Can we give him a donut?
No.
An apple.
Apple with peanut butter.
Apple donut.
Peanut butter, yeah.
An apple donut, banana with peanut butter.
Um, I'm definitely happy to go to any Caregivers Alliance and be a second person.
Yeah, same.
Schedule those, you know, others as, as well. Uh, it would be great to brainstorm with Matt McLean about how we can attract students here, like what would entice them.
To become board members?
Yeah.
Yeah, he'd be the best person to talk to about that.
Yeah, cause I have a feeling that the, there was a little self-perpetuating machine that COVID kind of killed, just.
Yes.
Yeah, the students, you know, the students who are moving off, like, you know, recruited either junior or sophomore to come on.
Yes.
Um, and I think we've lost that and now it's like, I'm gonna sit with adults on my Wednesday night, hear about really boring things, no thanks.
Well, then, it's just in the middle school, get them young.
Do you want me to, um, do you wanna be part of those conversations when I reach out to Libby about?
Yeah, if it works, I definitely would be, just if there is any. Yeah.
Set up a meeting with Matt.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of, it would get structured as like a credit project, if, you know, there's certain things that if we told them they were gonna do, they'd be really excited about.
What about college applications? That doesn't, isn't a thing anymore? I feel like.
It's a huge thing.
Yeah, so like people are looking for things to put on their resume.
I, I'm sure we can find somebody.
There's some really great students at Montpelier High School too, I think we're gonna find someone.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and we, the ones we had when we had them were fantastic and.
Yeah.
We would give them space to present almost immediately.
It was a really.
Well, they would be a good resource for us to keep that channel of communication alive between other students, you know? They could help us do that.
Yeah, so, um.
And, and the students that were in your, the public safety community were really amazing.
Amazing.
Really amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did try to recruit them actually.
Yeah, we did kind of a hard sell.
One of them did, yeah. But they're busy too, I mean, kids are busy and they have sports and other extracurricular activities, so.
It's one of the challenges is a lot of kids who would be interested in the school or else play sports or do theater and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what it is, but we'll figure it out, we'll find someone.
Yes.
So with this, okay, Annika, what would you like to do? Jill, you got an op-ed, what else?
Um, I was thinking I would like to do the, um, either sports events or the Caregivers Alliance if that's not already covered. I'm already going to field hockey games, I'm happy to go to more and things like that.
It would be nice if somebody went to the UES so that I don't worry about that.
And I think Keena Muncie would want me to volunteer to go to the senior center, so I would be.
Let's go and mention the senior.
Great, great.
I'll do the, um, high school games and farmers' markets.
Great.
Yeah.
I think we should sign Andrew to go to the senior center with Kristen, cause I think the two of them would be great at the senior center together.
With Jill, you mean?
I'm sorry, with Jill, yes. I think they'd be great at the senior center together.
We do go to the se- before COVID, the administrative team goes to the senior center to, once the budget is cooked.
Yeah.
To answer questions and serve lunch and things like that, it's Grant Geisler's favorite thing to do.
Yeah, well, and.
I have my berries.
I think a couple times I went there as a board member, it's, it's one of the bigger audiences.
Oh, they are the most articulate, educated audiences, absolutely.
No one kidding.
Yeah.
I wonder if the city council is a place where we can like pick up their public comment and every of the city councilman is like. Here's what you guys need to know about the school board, boom, 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 or something like that, or just like ask that, oh, but we have the same day, no? City council has the same as the school board, or the alternate.
Kristen and Rhett, isn't there a senior, senior center here too?
There is a senior center, yeah.
Oh, nice, cause the kids go there.
We have potlucks, there may be a potluck October second.
Ooh.
If, certainly that could be a place to solicit information and, and interest.
Much out, he's just trying to bribe you guys for your vote now.
It's okay, Amanda.
Oh, great. Um. I can do all the like community organizations that are, that work with some of our youth here, like the Vermont Independent Independent Union and the, and Out Ride Vermont, I would do that. Great.
Excellent.
Thank you for doing that. Jim, what did you sign up on, on the principal of Montpelier schools?
FOMS and the boosters at high school.
Boosters.
Okay.
And he's also volunteering to help deal with the recruitment of future student board members.
And I, and I also. And be a possible second at MSNS or UES Caregivers.
He's also definitely doing coffees and farmer's markets. When the, when the signup genius is ready, he's, he's on that.
I should ask Willow one, can I just have a table right here?
Might as well, yeah. Can I just take a shingle? Did we, do we wanna brainstorm questions now or do that over email? What were you thinking?
How are we doing with the agenda now?
We're good.
We're good.
Although I would take the time to do it.
Is the, is the thought exchange a presentation, Libby, or is it?
Yeah, we're doing that.
It's not a presentation, I just wanted you to have the link to that, that's a resource that we have purchased with Esser Two money, um, and just take a look at it.
It's good.
In our hands yet, but, uh, once the bill is paid, it will be, we just, we had to wait for the amendment to get approved. Um, it's a really cool, it's like Google survey on steroids, it's a really cool tool that we'll have at our fingertips. Um, so once I get the four-on-one of how to work it, um, it's certainly at the boards, you know, you all can certainly use it as well for your board work.
Oh, great.
That's awesome.
That's all great.
For anything, it's, I mean, just a, if you haven't had a chance to look at it and for the public, it's just a really brief, like. You can ask a question, you can either be in a meeting together and ask a question, or you can do it virtually without the meeting taking place synchronously. And people chat in answers to the questions and that you can rate people's answers and you can answer, you can talk back to it.
Oh, wow.
So you can see like which themes rise to the top as the most prioritized, um, and what people are saying to each other about it. Uh, so it's a really, I've only seen little demos of it, but it's a super cool tool, um, for getting, um, engagement from people.
Right.
Me.
So let's do some questions, I'm ready.
These are questions we're asking ourselves or questions we want?
Questions you wanna pose to the, um, I mean, a good one is, is list the, the top three things you'd like to see more investment in.
Okay.
I'd ask for specifics too, if I could, so if somebody says social emotional health, I'd always follow up, could you tell me more about what you're envisioning?
And maybe some questions around values too, like what are the, you know, what are some of the values that you think should be driving our spending decisions?
That should be driving our spending decisions?
Yeah. Which goes so much to priorities, but I think it's a little.
So are we mostly trying to generate questions that are focused on budget for now because that's the most immediate, yeah, okay.
Is it, do we wanna also like just hear, what are your top concerns?
Yeah.
Your top three concerns? Maybe they only have one.
And do these all need to be framed within COVID nineteen? It looks like these are intended to prepare for, prevent and respond to COVID nineteen.
No.
No, that's for our besser.
Yeah.
No, that's why it was like beyond Esser.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we could frame up that, you know, some of these funds are tied to expenditures around COVID nineteen, so, you know, in addition to other things, you know, it's, it's. You've got specific ideas around that, that would be super helpful.
I think it would also be nice to know like what's, if we're talking to a student, like what's the best thing about school or what's, I don't know if it's your favorite thing or what's like.
The strengths.
What's the thing that you're getting the most out of right now?
Yeah.
I don't wanna frame it as just favorite, it's cause, you know, they might just all say P E or recess or whatever, but.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Which is, you know, I understand they have very, those are very valuable, but I also wanna know more like. It's not just what is that you like about school, but it's like what's helping you get the most out of it, which, I don't know, maybe that's a hard, yeah, I don't know, but that's, that's why I was trying to frame the question in that way.
I think also as students, like what, yeah, what don't you like? And they're. As one of the students, you might get some kind of infrastructure building type things that you might not get with the general public. You're like, oh my gosh, the blockers are awful, although they're not.
More, come on, Jim.
But there was a time when they were like pretty gross and like, who would know that?
Mm-hmm.
The only caveat to that would be that any kind of document you make, remember it's a public facing document and you don't want any teachers' names in there.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
We, we will make sure that we have.
Just a reminder.
Yeah, yeah.
I think from adults in the community too, it would be interesting to know sort of what they are seeing that's working really well in the schools, what they think is, um, you know. What they value the most in their experience with the schools. So kind of like the student question, but just for, for adults also, I think it's important to know.
In terms of data collection, do you, um, do we ask the same ten questions to every single group?
Hmm.
You know, like, are we, do we have a sign at the farmer's market that say, here's our top ten questions? Give us feedback, you know, like.
Yeah, and there can always be open-ended.
We could have composite, people can record and send us like WhatsApp chat. Hey, we do that.
Voice recording, yeah.
Like, here are my top ten concerns, I don't know. That's just a question for data people, Andrew's not here.
I think it's gonna end up being more qualitative anyway, even if we do ask the same question, people are going to be giving open-ended long answers, so it's. I don't know if we're gonna be able to do like a quick analysis of like eighty-six percent, you know? But if we ask the question about like what are your top three priorities, we can sort of list that out. I was kind of wondering the same thing from a data standpoint of like, do we wanna present people with choices, like here are all the sort of buckets of funding that we typically, you know, put money into. What are your top three? But it might be more valuable to leave it open-ended.
I, I think, I, in my opinion. I just, I think that we should, I think this is a beginning of a real community engagement process and I think like we should have that, just like be open.
Yeah. Yeah.
Especially cause like we already know that there are certain things that the district needs to spend its money on and so like, this is like. I think of this process as just like beyond the actual money that we have this year on the budget, but that it helps us see what the community is like envisioning, that it gets tied in with the visioning process with the consultant. Like it gets tied in with the budget process that Libby has with administrations, I think it's just like the beginning of really listening. And then creating those thematic things where we can see, hey, there's, like, we already heard that the special ed needs a lot of support, how do, you know, like. We heard a lot of that, so how do we go about and what are the tools that administrations are doing, what are the things that we need to do?
I could see value in using, um, a method like we used at our retreat in terms of like a sticky board, you know, if you're gonna have like a large volume of people going through, I mean, I know that we, we would love to dig into substance, but some people may not feel comfortable. Um, in that and would rather kind of stay somewhat anonymous, so just to give people, and I like the questions are visually posted and then folks can ruminate and maybe they can just, you know, stick their sticky and like get on their way and if you also are having a traffic jam, there's a lot of people, you know, building up, it gives people still, you know, at least a quick way to. To chime in, it doesn't allow for follow-up, but it at least maybe could, you know, initiate some thinking around some topics.
Yeah, no, about three or four years ago, we did a FOMS thing like that, based on the tele-covered library and it was, you know, people. Put sticky notes with kind of like, each one had, you know, three things that they wanted the school to focus on budget-wise and they just, you know, wrote a rundown, put it on the board and then they kind of like lined them up in groups and it was, it was pretty clear where priorities.
I feel like it was like six or seven years ago.
Huh?
Maybe six or seven years ago now.
Yeah, it was before me.
Definitely, definitely.
It was before me.
The years are ticking away.
Who, and, and anybody wants to go to the library?
Four or five. Huh?
The library is a good place.
You mean like a table, just, just to drop in and see?
Drop in, talk to the librarian so that they can help with, you know.
In terms of like almost leaving like something like that up for a period of time, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I could see that working here as well.
I think you could build like a drop box in the library.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Is it safe to say that the board's role is the, the public facing and that the administration, um, is, is engaging with the staff and educators on getting their input on the budget development? I'm just looking through this, um, public engagement piece and it mentions educators and I.
Again, that's for our besser, right? So we generally work with the principals who know their buildings pretty well, right? I mean, to think that there's a lot of wiggle room in a local budget isn't accurate, isn't an accurate thought, right? There's not, because most of it is salaries and benefits, um, so, of staff we already have. So there's a, there's not a huge amount of wiggle room to play with here, right? So, um, it's the administrator's responsibility to truly think about what are the priorities that we need, we're starting a process on Monday, you know, with our big brainstorming session. Um, and they bring their, their teachers' voices to that table as well, with our besser, we're starting those conversations too next week actually. We're around some different spaces with individual teaching teams.
Thank you. So I'll send this out, you guys have any questions, you can reply to me and then I'll put it up, I'll do a flyer and then like come up with some schedule that people, I'll send it to Emma so she can do a genius. Chris, just go ahead, Sam.
Great.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
This is great, this would be good to have a year where we can start doing that back and see people. Let's move to policy monitoring. You know, I have three, I have fifteen student attendance, I have fourteen student freedom of expression and whatever.
Animal dissection.
Animal dissection, I just don't remember.
G five.
G five, that's my idea.
Do you call it again?
I have a motion to approve the student attendance monitoring report.
I'll move to approve.
Oh, I have a question, oh.
Oh, we can, we can do that during discussion.
Approve the student attendance monitoring report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it. Yep.
I'm not sure if I said that.
We both did, same, can you say?
Uh, discussion?
I have a few questions, um. What I got was the procedure, that, that's what, right?
For which one?
Procedure in the.
Attendance procedure was in our board package, yeah.
In our board pocket.
But it's.
And, and so I have a question regarding the truancy procedure, this one, that was on the website. Um, and, what was my question? Where did I write it? Sorry. Okay, and, and so there is, um, it, it's sixteen passed this year, a couple of months ago, which is the discipline, um. Bill that passed, which created a working group that's looking at. Bill that passed, which created a working group that's looking at discipline data and suspensions, but also has a piece on truancy. And it has, um, a data reporting clause that, that the, uh, schools will report to the agency of education every year. The reporting of truancy and like what was done and, so I, I didn't see that in the, in the procedure itself, that of the data collection.
That procedure that you have in your hand, that's still on our website, the truancy procedure?
Yes.
Yeah, that's given to us by the courts.
Okay.
So that's not ours that we have written.
Okay.
That's administered to the courts and they haven't given up, they, it's not the most facile system. So, so that's, that's the last update that was given to us. And yeah, most likely is out of date because we're working with the court system on that, like they give it to us.
Okay, and then, and so when I was reading the procedure, um, there is, in this, in this sheet. It says, uh, level one and level two, students have missed ten or more days in any twelve week period.
Mm-hmm.
But in our procedure itself, too many papers, uh, it doesn't specify the twelve week period, I'm, I, I just wanted to understand.
We might just have missed that in the procedure part.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Because it's like, so if I miss five days in twelve weeks from sick or like unexcused, right? Like then, can I miss like ten days through the year? So that, that's what I didn't really get between this sheet and this procedure.
I would, I actually didn't recognize, we're gonna take that one down, the court one, because it's so out of date. So I, and we'll reach out to the courts to child, Nick reached out to the courts to try to get a new one.
Okay, okay.
Cuz the last meeting I had with the courts around that was probably my first year of my superintendency.
Okay.
So that's what that's from, so it's four years old, and I, I actually didn't even realize it was still up there. Um, so we're gonna take that down, thank you for pointing that out to me Amanda.
Great.
Um, and I can find clarity on the twelve, twelve week piece.
Okay, thank you.
For our procedure, and just to clarify is that if a kid is sick, that's an excused absence, right?
Yeah.
That's not an unexcused absence, so truancy is dealing with unexcused absences.
So I was trying to, but when a court gets involved in truancy, who's, who's the enforcement against? Is it against the guardian?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to say the court gets involved with truancy is, um.
Optimistic.
Yes.
Yeah.
Really optimistic of you. It just doesn't happen.
Yeah.
I had a question about, um, so I know there was mention of the community liaison, I think is the position that came through Esser. And it's probably too early to tell whether or not that's being successful yet.
Are you kidding me? He's amazing.
Uh, cool, uh, but so I'm just curious if that position is using any, you know, I know there's, I didn't go as far as Amanda to dig up that truancy, um, procedure. But I remember it was mentioned and I wondered what that looked like or how archaic it was and wondered if the community liaison is, like, what approaches or new approaches? As does this individual envision using and will we kind of see at some point the outcomes of that?
The truancy, there's very, like, that's, that's outlined for us by the courts, I mean, there's very.
How you can go about?
Right, what the procedure is.
Okay.
You know, when the letters are sent home and all that kinda stuff.
Sure.
We have a whole lot of wiggle room there.
Yeah.
Um, Nick currently is a phenomenal hire, I'll have him come talk to you guys one night.
Great.
He's, he's super, um, he's technically got a caseload of four students right now, maybe a couple more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and he is building relationships with them, he's at their houses, he's got kids texting him to make a connection. Most of the kids are just not willing to leave their house for anything. Um, and so, or, you know, he's making the goals he should be making, the first goal is, so let's go outside, let's go for a walk. You know, like, you know, let's do that kinda stuff. Um, he's ver, he has a lot of experience with this in Colorado and in Monmouth before he went to Colorado.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can imagine, I haven't seen him work with kids yet, but I can imagine they just love him.
Mm-hmm.
He's joined our equity team, um, he's working with kids who are having a hard time, even if they get themselves to school, they are refusing to get into any type of class. Um, and so he's connecting with that, those students as well. Um, he's just a fantastic, fantastic hire.
Great.
Um, so I'll have to have him come talk to you. As far as like envisioning new procedures and things like that, I think he just, he needs to learn more than what, you know, he just needs to learn the procedures now, you know? Um, so, but yeah, he's, I'll have him come talk to you guys one night, cuz he's great.
I'll be soon. Great, thank you.
And so for the, I, I guess the, the last piece will be like the data reporting, um.
Yeah, well, when the law comes through, we'll make sure that, that policy will probably, the student attendance policy may have to be updated.
Yeah, well, that already passed, that piece of it.
I know, but we haven't gotten any written guidance on it.
Oh, okay.
You know, we've gotten the written guidance around suspension.
Uh-huh.
We got that just last week to give you a sense, right? So that, the law passed a while ago, but the written guidelines on that just came by, came through, um, I don't know, Friday.
Well, who raised the guidance?
Yeah.
Oh, she did, okay. So that, that's the, no child under eight should be suspended, right?
Yeah. So when they send through for truancy, then we'll let you know if the policy needs to be updated.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all I have.
Great, any other, uh, questions, discussion around the student attendance policy? Uh, all is in favor of approving the monitoring report?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks. Um, F fourteen, uh, student freedom of expression in school sponsored media, I have a motion to approve the monitoring report.
I'm ready to approve the monitoring report, F fourteen.
Uh, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Um, any discussion?
Two brief questions, probably for Libby. Um, is there any like media literacy courses or curriculum that's available to students?
I'd have to get back to you about specifically what we have from, yeah.
Yeah.
I could speak to my middle school daughter, it's very.
And it may show up, you know, not be specifically, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive, actually.
Yeah, cool.
They, they learn a lot about digital footprint, about questioning sources, but it's sort of embedded in their.
Yeah.
P L A and social studies.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have a curriculum for digital citizenship.
Okay, yeah.
Um, but, um. And that course is pretty comprehensive in covering sort of like what you would want it to cover for a middle school student?
Yeah.
In terms of like.
High school is high school, it's, it's actually a K D curriculum.
Yeah.
Yeah, my first grader came home with the worksheet the other day.
It only came on my radar last year for.
Yeah.
Noticing that my kid was in it, but anyway, it's, it was, um, but it was really great because there was like asking questions that exactly the type of like about sexting and.
Yeah.
You know, what's appropriate to post online and how your footprint sort of lives with you forever and.
Yeah.
That, those kinds of conversations.
Great.
In, at eighth grade level.
Thank you.
Anyway, guys, so media literacy and like critical thinking, is that what you're asking about?
No, more along the lines of what we're talking about, just that kids are being, you know, they're being tooled up, you know, with the ability to navigate this media heavy world that we now live in.
When we first got here, there wasn't anything and that was a main thing for Mike Berry to do.
Yeah.
In the last couple of years and, um, it, it lives with our media specialists.
Yep.
Right now, they kinda own it, but, but it is, I know Don Taylor was doing things in the system, it's kind of gone through that route at the middle school along with, um, Katie Chabot. And it, it's mainly housed with the media specialists, helping the teachers embed, but there, there's mandatory things that all kids have to do.
Great.
Too. And a lot of the global citizenship, um, standards are based around like identifying bias in a source or.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, being able to recognize when a source is credible and.
Yeah.
Being able to weigh different perspectives on the same issue, that type of thing.
Yeah.
So that's being taught across the board in global citizenship.
Okay, thank you. My other question was, is there a student newspaper or a blog that we could ever see that would just be like an example of what?
Last year, we did have one at the high school.
Uh-huh.
I don't know if there is one, I have not heard of one.
Yeah.
Yet this year.
Mr. Tillotson told me, he's Soren's T A.
There's gonna be one, is he the advisor?
He was on, yeah, yes.
Advisor, so it's probably in the works then.
It's in the works.
I think he's on the list tonight.
We signed up, yes. He's on the consent agenda.
So Jamie's doing it, then yeah, there, there will be a, a newspaper coming out, it's just early in the school year and I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Any other, uh, questions, comments, discussion? Uh, all is in favor of approving F fourteen, student freedom of expression in school sponsored media?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks, and then. G five, animal dissection?
I move to motion, motion to approve the animal dissection policy monitoring report.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So there was some discussion about this at the policy committee, um, meeting, and we just had some questions around the procedure. So it says that we, our policy reads that we will develop procedures, but we were not able to, so I don't know if the word procedure, I'm thinking of procedure in terms of the procedures that are listed.
With the policy.
On our website with the policy, but if this is more of a loose definition of procedure in terms of like just the science teacher themselves need to like develop something.
The science teachers ask, yeah, so I can put that in like procedure language, but it would be like one sentence, the science teachers will ask before every animal dissection.
We thought it would be good for the public to be able to, I also looked in the, um, handbooks that were available online, but the one from this year isn't quite up yet, right? Or wasn't when I looked.
When did you look?
A couple of weeks ago.
It's up there now, Anna did before she left.
So I didn't see any, um, talk about dissection in either the curriculum for the science courses or anything like that. So we just felt like at, at the, the people in the policy committee felt like it would be appropriate for that information to be sort of publicly accessible. For parents and, you know, students to be able to look at. Based on the policy language and the, and the law, it sounded like, um, in the statute, that it was sort of requiring that to be accessible, so. Um, I don't know if that means, like, I've never really run into this with any of your policy monitoring reports, I don't know if that means that we should reconsider saying that we're compliant. Or if we should just say that that was our reading, our reading of it, or your reading of it, was that it can just be a policy, a procedure. Developed by the science teacher and, um, expressed to the students. It does say, um, I think it, the law talks about parents also or guardians having notifications, so I don't know if that's happening, anyway.
Well, we didn't do any animal dissection last year, so, so there wouldn't have been any notification last year.
Okay.
But I can certainly put, uh, procedure.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, and then I'm fine just interpreting it that way for now and then moving forward.
Mm, there'll be one connected.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions, comments, discussion regarding animal dissection? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have two policy readings, which I don't think we actually need, I think we just need a reading, but, uh, first reading of policy. E zero one, fiscal management and E zero two, budget execution. And just for a quick summary, these, uh, policies are being, um, updated to reflect, uh, small changes in. Basically, federal register citations and a few other just updates to make them fully compliant with current law. I don't know if anybody wants to add to that, but, um, they're posted if the public wants to look at them and weigh in with the upcoming readings.
So Jim, did, so Andrew, the, um, is it the budget committee, is that what it's called?
Finance.
Finance.
Finance committee, the finance committee, that, these went to the finance committee first.
Yes.
And so it was my understanding that Grant, along with the finance committee, um, ma, tweaked and made the changes necessary. I just don't know where to look on this document to know like.
Yeah, when it got downloaded as a PDF, the red ink.
The strikeouts and stuff like that.
I think the red went away.
Okay.
I was wondering about that.
Okay, I mean, I tend to just have complete faith in our finance committee and Grant to make the changes necessary.
For the second reading, I'll make sure that the, we'll up a cross outs or something.
Okay, yeah.
Download it as a PDF.
It'd be good to be able to bring your eyes straight to the changes, cuz they're long policies.
Yeah. I was wondering if it would happen, maybe we could take the time to look. The, they were in our board packet in the last meeting and those strikers were there.
And those were, yeah.
But, but there were some changes made to those.
But there, then there were changes since then, okay, thank you.
Um, we're gonna have this second reading in the next school board meeting, which is two weeks from now.
Yeah.
Maybe we can put a post on front porch forum, just to say, policy, second reading on this policy, just like to give more. To start kinda like.
To seek input, public input.
To seek input, or just to let them know that that's what we're gonna be doing.
Mm-hmm.
So that people know that those are the ones that are gonna be.
We could just post our agendas on front porch forum, which has all the policy stuff.
Yeah.
That could be good practice.
Great idea.
Okay.
Um, we generally get those like on Friday mornings, Libby?
Right, generally, I, um, so I'm doing them now and they take, they take me approximately four hours.
That's bananas.
And I've obviously made two mistakes, or three mistakes each, each week. Um, so I, I'm scheduled myself to do them Thursdays. Um, so you, you're getting them Thursdays, cuz I'm sending them out as soon as I can do them. But it may be Fridays sometime, it's when I have a four hour block of time to, to do it either Thursday or Friday.
I can't imagine any time you actually have a four block, hour block of time.
It's blocked out during Anna's entire maternity leave.
I'll, I'll make a note for myself then for the, that Friday before our next meeting to do the post on front porch forum.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you, Mia, that's great.
Yeah, great idea.
Um, so now we're gonna move into executive session, which I think probably means sitting here and moving to the.
Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
When you do a front porch forum, does it go to the Northfield Front Porch Forum, because that's the Roxbury Front Porch Forum?
Good question, I think it does, I'll take a look, cuz I know it goes to surrounding towns.
Okay, I think that a lot of them do, but I don't know how it works necessarily, but it's definitely two separate front porch forums.
Yep.
The other thing is, if one, someone were to be elected to the school board, would they get some kind of how to packet? Or this is the, you know, three hundred pages of stuff, and if it's three hundred pages of rules specifically is a big thing, like what you can and can't do, that's. Would be a priority to myself if I were to be, but, um, how does, that, is there a, you know, start with these five things are a priority? The next ten things or something like that, is there a?
Yeah, I think the best thing to do, um. The V S B A has some good kind of starter packets, which are worth looking at, remote school boards association, it's V S B A.
It's literally called November.
Yeah, like V S B A V T dot org, I think is, um.
November training.
And they will send it to you. They usually have a training too, right?
Yeah, they have a training.
They will mail you a package if you want, hard copy, um, they will mail you all the things that you want to.
Um, the, the other, uh, I would read through the policies, um, you know, don't, you don't have to read them like they're a novel. You don't have to, you're not gonna absorb it, but it's good to just kind of familiarize yourself and pay attention to a couple of things. There's a couple on like, like board expectations, you know, board superintendent relations, um, you know, pay attention to, to that, um.
Let's vote first.
Yeah, well, we're, we're, we're just talking to you right away.
I also give the new, I also give the new member a call and.
Yeah.
Take a walk with you or go out to lunch together or something and answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, and I would be happy to take that member out to lunch as well, um. Uh, and the other thing.
I didn't get any lunch.
Okay, you're a little golden, sorry. Where's my lunch?
Where's my lunch?
No, I'm happy to take anyone out to lunch.
I think I'm gonna have a busy lunch schedule in the next few weeks.
Um, and the other thing that that person needs to do is they have to get sworn in before you can become, you get an official member. And you can do it by phone, you can do it by person, but the, the town clerk needs to do that.
And usually Anna would be reaching out.
Yes.
With an email.
with an email address.
Oh, I'll make sure that happens.
And, um, and the swearing in
Yes.
rules and the phone number to call and all of that stuff. So that's gonna be, have, you know.
Tammy Legacy is an excellent person to be sworn in by.
Yes, and she does require in person. She will not do it over the phone.
Yeah, she does.
And we used to have, Jim, legend has it that there used to be like a mentorship
Yes.
type of program happening.
Well, I wouldn't call it a program.
Tradition.
Pair, pairing.
Jill is gonna do it.
But that has not happened, I don't think, since I came on. Jill, did you get a mentor?
I did have a mentor. She's gonna volunteer to mentor.
Did you?
Jill.
So I did not get a mentor. I don't think me, or Amanda, or Kristen.
Yeah, I don't think.
So we've, we've been like really flying by the seat of our pants since COVID.
And it gets great.
And, uh, initiation has been fast and furious.
Yeah.
And then we also have subcommittees, so I think, um, and that would probably be a conversation with Jim, but if there's particular topics that someone is interested in being on a subcommittee, there's always room on. We have negotiations committee, we have policy committees, we have equity committees, we have lots of.
It wouldn't be the, would it, would that be something that might be more appropriate once there was an actual election? Wouldn't I just step into where Jerry is because that's where the needs are or not? I mean, maybe you guys.
Oh, fill in the role on the committee she was on?
Yeah, I mean.
Like which committee she was on?
Yeah, I mean, it's not actually, you know, it's sort of.
We can discuss that, right?
Yeah, we can discuss that.
There might be some shuffling around.
There's, there's a little room for shifting, um, based on, uh, interest and, I mean, we have a few committees right now that, you know, we have four members that could go down to three or a fourth could drop off and you could come on if you're really interested. Yeah, there's, there's room for shifting, definitely. I would, I would give some thought to what interests you or you feel your strengths are.
Okay. But it probably wouldn't happen for a few weeks.
The new board member should think about that.
The new board member should think about that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Regarding the Front Porch Forum, so I do post our agenda to the Northfield Roxbury Front Porch Forum every week.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know that you need to click that box or.
Look at Kristen, just.
Hey.
Already there.
Just trying to get the word out there.
Ahead of the curve.
Excellent. Um, let's have a motion, okay. We need two motions. We need a motion, um, we need the Bridget motion, which is.
I have it.
You have it? Which is that it would be detriment, basically something around the, it would be detrimental to the, um, positioning of the board to discuss these matters in public or some such.
Well, I thought I had it.
I, I think something like that would.
Because of, because it's around pers- it's around negotiation.
Negotiations.
Negotiations.
Yeah.
Contract negotiations. It puts the board in a disadvantage.
In a disadvantaged or compromised position or something.
Okay, I have it, um.
I'll pull the two.
You go for it.
Okay.
There's a lot of fill in the blanks that I'm not ready to do.
This is for the contract negotiation, right?
Yeah.
I move to find a premature general public knowledge regarding the contracts with the unions would place the district at a substantial disadvantage because we risk disclosing our negotiation strategy if we discuss the proposed contract terms in public.
My gosh, it's like you channeled Bridget.
Yeah.
I second what he said.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Uh, now we need to, a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel and contract, uh, negotiations.
No, for the purpose of choosing a board member.
I think, is that broadly personnel, I think?
Could be, sure.
I think, I think a board member matters, personnel.
Sure, okay.
Um, yeah.
I move we enter executive session for personnel and contract negotiation matters.
Yeah, would the asterisk of personnel means choosing a board member?
Personnel from board members.
Um.
Okay.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to nominate Rhett Williams, uh, to the vacant, or motion to nominate someone to, um, the vacant seat on the board, um, which, uh, is the Roxbury seat expiring, um, March of twenty twenty-two.
I move that the board appoint Rhett Williams to serve in the Roxbury position vacated by Jerry Huck through the finality of her term in March twenty twenty-two.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, congratulations Rhett.
Thanks Rhett. Yeah, thanks Rhett.
I will, uh, send him an email and, um, do we wish to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, can, so. Sorry, just like, uh, can we just make a little plan to support him in his entrance? Real quick, like Jill can.
Yeah, I think Jill's gonna be a mentor. I'll reach out for lunch, um,
I'm happy to.
Kind of give him some, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we, we can send that PowerPoint from, um,
Yeah, from VSBA.
from Pedro for that board training.
And he will need the swearing in an email. I do feel like Anna reminded me of that instead.
I'll get the email for him.
And get him an email address.
He's just gotta call Tammy.
Oh, he must have emailed his letters.
Yep, we got his email.
Okay.
A second.
Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.